Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, my colleagues on council, city staff, and other guests. I welcome you to our public work session. And I would ask that all of my colleagues please note your presence electronically.
Six members of City Council are present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Manager. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor.
You have the floor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, Portsmouth City Council, and Portsmouth Family. I would like to begin with our public work session with several presentations this evening. So I will start with the monthly utility billing. And if it pleases council, I would like to address you from the floor. Again, thank you all. I'm actually doing the utility monthly billing presentation because we have now started -- am I too loud? Oh, billing monthly. That started July 1st. And with the monthly billing, what happened is we had to finish a cycle before the July 1st cycle started. And so as I go through this, it's pretty quick, but I just wanted to give everybody an understanding because we did receive several calls. And so I felt that it was a need to address it so everybody could be very clear with how they should proceed. So why did we change to monthly billing? We brought this to council some time ago, maybe like in July or -- what is this? No, no, no. May or June. To talk about why. So just as a quick summary, this was a relief to residents, the monthly billing cycle. Instead of how we were doing the bimonthly billing cycle, when a resident would get behind on their billing, they would be actually paying for four months instead of two. So it caused some of our residents hardship. Reducing delinquencies. Instead of being four months behind, if you're behind now, it's just a 30-day billing cycle. And it allows you a better opportunity to catch up because, again, on the bill, you will have your trash, refuse, and you have your water bill. It also allows us to reduce shut-offs. One of the things that we were finding is when people get so behind, we were having to shut off more water. So this would help reduce some of that. And reducing theft. I think that speaks for itself. So how do I read my monthly bill? So what we have is two situations. We have our billing period, which is our billing cycle. This particular bill ran from April to July 1. So you have, if you see where I've highlighted the bottom where it says "previous balance", that previous balance for this particular bill was paid. The payment was received on 7/1, which they receive credit for that. As you see, their balance forward was zero. When you come down, you have a current charges due. This is your current billing cycle. So that cycle would be from July to August. As you see, the current charges are due August 4th. So it would be from July 1 or July 2 to July 31, which gives you your current bill, your water, your sewage collection, your tax, and your refuse. Now, as you can see, it's pretty consistent with what the bill was in a bimonthly cycle. So it's pretty much half, which gives people who are on monthly income, first of the month, it helps them better prepare and be able to pay their bill without the hardship. And if they get behind, it would basically put them back where they were, but it's not putting them so far behind. In a four-month cycle, where that bill would be $400. So your balance forward. This particular bill shows what it would look like on a regular schedule. So this particular bill, and this was a commercial account only because I know that because the commercial bill is actually -- well, not a commercial account, my apologies. This is someone who was on a payment plan. The reason I know that is because there's a previous balance. They actually paid a portion of their payment plan, the $162, which means they had a balance due at the end of that billing cycle. So the current charges plus the balance move that was pushed forward now takes them to $260. Imagine this person being on a payment plan and having to do their bill plus the four months or the three months that they are continually behind. And then the next bill, instead, you would see the $162, where that bill might have been You get what I'm saying? Okay. So I just wanted to show how this should and will assist us reduce delinquencies. It would also assist us in identifying if we have issues with meters. It won't take so long. If the consumption changes, we'll know from there, like what happened. It should be a report. And you don't have to wait four cycles to figure it out. So it gives us -- it's definitely efficient. It's effective. And we're pretty much in line with all the other localities as it relates to billing. So for this particular presentation, do you have any questions?
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So there's been a lot of chatter and confusion about shifting to monthly billing. And I've seen a fair number of complaints on social media about, "I'm not sure who to talk to to get my bill resolved." So who do we point them to to get their questions answered about their utility bill?
Well, hopefully, they'll watch this presentation because that's one of the reasons I did it. Even though we prepared and gave everybody fair warning, once they got it, it was still questionable. So they can call the Public Utilities Line. They can call -- they can send an email. The email is PortsmouthPublicUtilities. I don't know. I'll make sure we post it. They have a customer service email that they can send their questions to as well. We went from having four people in customer service to 13. So we have a staff who can manage that load or the calls. And you can call and leave a message, and someone will return your call. So if they have a question, I would first point them to this public work session, which it would provide information. And it seems like the ones that are having the biggest problems are the ones who didn't pay their bill at the end of their billing cycle. So I've heard questions about, "Hey, you double-billed me. I got charged twice." Well, actually, you didn't. And what I didn't show is at the bottom of your bill, it shows the periods of consumption and the time period. So if they look at the bottom of their bill, they could see the date to one date from, let's say, from April to -- it shows maybe like three or four periods of billing cycles. They could just follow and look at it. People are always going to have questions, but we're here to answer them.
So the customer service telephone number for Public Utilities is just the Public Utilities number? There's no special number that they need to --
Oh.
Okay.
There's no special number. So again, yeah, they can call the Public Utilities number. They will get a call back if they have to leave a message. There is an email, but I don't remember. We were building that just in case people had additional questions, that they could send it to the email with a 48-hour response. That's pretty much it. Oh, and the bills are online, so.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Terry, for the presentation. Question, I guess, a lot of people ask, the Hampton Roads HRSD bill, is that related to the city's Public Utilities bill?
That's a great question. And let me say this, it is completely separate, but they use our information so you know what's in line. And I'll tell you something that I could share. When COVID hit and people were really behind on their water bills, HRSD experienced the same thing. And so that's Hampton Road Sanitation District. It's not our water, it's sanitation. So what happened was their water would get cut off. HRSD now follows our monthly billing cycle as well. So we all work in conjunction together. So we had HRSD, when they cut off your water, it has nothing to do with us. And that's because you're delinquent on your bill with them as well. And so HRSD had actually been cutting off water, where we gave our citizens additional time to pay their bills. And when they found out that it wasn't the city and it was HRSD, they would call and ask if they get their money back because they paid us in order to get their water cut off. Absolutely not. But two separate situations, however, they all tie into billing and they all -- we work in conjunction. So if their water is cut off and they're behind on HRSD bill but caught up with city, it's HRSD. If their water is cut off and they're behind on HRSD or city, then it's city. They just -- but it's a better way to keep up with it across the board. I think so, too.
Thank you.
Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you for the presentation. My question is, for somebody like me, because last month, I forgot to pay my bill. And I do this often. I have four months, well, two months now. Is it possible we can go to automatic bill pay so that it can come out monthly? Because that's, you know, you actually either have to send a check or you got to go on the website. And sometimes I forget those things. And I know it's other people like that as well.
So interestingly enough, there are options with your regular bank account that can set up bill pay monthly. However, we are looking at a new billing system for utilities. It is an older system, but it works. And it was an internal system through Oracle. So -- and it's a transfer of information, but here and there. So the answer to your question, you can go through your bank and do it with a regular bill pay. We are working toward a new system that should allow that. And that would probably be with a third party. But again, we're just trying to get customer service up to par. We're trying to start getting things in line that would assist our customers. You can go and have it come out of your bank account through your bank. But because now we have it on the monthly cycle, you'll actually -- it should be a lot easier to do. Because think about it. How, when you say, and if I can use you an example, you're saying, "When would I, you know, I forgot. I didn't have to pay it last month. What am I due?" Now you know when it's due. And it'll be easier to have those funds removed from your account or reduce your account because it's on a cycle, just like you know when it's going to come. You know it's going to be the fourth of the month based on your billing cycle. It'd be a lot easier to have those funds debited from your account.
I do tend to agree, but I got a lot of bills that I got to worry about. So -- and also, the issue with doing it with your bank is that sometimes different months is different prices. So when you do --
I don't know who you're banking with.
When you do it automatically, you can't, you won't be able to gauge, like, this money might be $100, next money might be $102.
Oh, well, that's the beautiful -- that is why we went to monthly. Because one thing about it, your consumption, you can pretty much identify, unless you got company or, I won't say, unless you have visitors at your home, you pretty much will be able to gauge what your billing consumption is because it will be more consistent. Before, you're on a two- or two-and-a-half-month cycle. This way, you know exactly what you're paying unless you have some issues with your plumbing, unless you had a different circumstance or situation. Before, I would actually agree, you don't know what you're going to get. And because, you know, summer months, winter months, company, this, whatever, your billing cycle was -- this one is from 4/21 to 7/1. Now you're going to be on a 30-day billing cycle instead of -- this one was a 71-day billing cycle. I think what I would just advise customers or my recommendation, give it a minute, give it three to six months, see the difference. This is definitely going to be a benefit for the city. It's going to be a benefit for our residents, and it will be consistent. As we continue to grow in utilities, as we continue to improve utilities, those things that would enhance our system, we will be looking toward that. Right now, we actually updated our phone system. I won't get into all of that. But that's why it's a lot better than it was in being able to reach our customer service
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Terry. So the online payment where you can go to the Portsmouth website, then go to Public Utilities and pay it online, there's a fee that's associated with it whether you pay it with your checking account or Visa card.
Credit card.
Credit card. And I believe the credit card has a higher fee. So is that a third-party fee or is that the city fee? And now that we're going to monthly, and you're saying there may be another vendor that the city may be using, will that change the fee structure?
No. So the -- our fees are through our third-party who does the online. And we use, anytime you use a credit card, pretty much anywhere, it's associated with the fee. But if you use your debit card or bank account, it's cheaper. I think it's a dollar if you use your bank account or debit, and I think it's $3 if you use your credit card, the fees associated. But those fees are set by the third-party. The city does not absorb that cost because it would be excessive for us. But that's just associating with any type of method of payment. So I don't know if I answered your question, but I don't believe that it would just be negotiated with the contract of whatever vendor we decide to go with. I think it's like that for, it's definitely like that for personal property and anything else. So that would be a negotiation with the third-party if we decide to move forward with another vendor. Or when the terms and conditions are up for our current contract, it's something we may want to consider.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So just a quick check, where do we stand on delinquent accounts? What's the delinquent balance on the residential side and on the commercial side right now? And if you don't know the numbers, if you can just follow up with us and send us a note so we know where we stand as we shift into monthly, and hopefully, we'll see the delinquent balance
Yes.
Go down.
And that's a good, and I will provide support on that information. And one of the things, just like this, so the perfect segue into this, you see how this billing period is 4/21/23 through 7/1/23? So your billing period, when you bill, say, if we never went to monthly billing, or let's consider June 30th because this is the end of the fiscal year. Every bill associated here that would affect June 30th would actually be your accounts receivable. So in other words, anything that's over 30 days looks delinquent. So you have a period here of April, May, June. So again, your delinquencies look high because you had a final billing period that ended at the end of the fiscal year. So this should resolve or bring us to the point where we can really identify a true delinquency for a 30-day versus a billing cycle. And I think that's where some of the confusion comes when we say, "Well, what's delinquent?" Well, this would truly be delinquent if it was not paid by July 1.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, thank you, ma'am. You may proceed with the next presentation.
What you got next?
The Humane Society video.
Okay. So the next presentation, last council meeting, my favorite person in the world, Mr. Toller, said that the Humane Society was not taking animals anymore. And it's interesting because we were actually preparing a presentation for the Humane Society because I don't think people really realize that the Humane Society is there. And so I thought, you know, it'd be good to introduce the Humane Society to the citizens so that they, the ones who don't know that it's there, are aware where it's located and what the Humane Society does for the city of Portsmouth. So we're going to watch a quick video, and then I'll bring some information. Where's Eric there? Who's -- oh, not you. Where's the video? Do you have it? And then we'll introduce you to the staff. But I just wanted everybody to know that the Humane Society is in Portsmouth, is there, is up and running. I had an opportunity on my Friday out in the public to visit the Humane Society. So I thought it would be a good idea to bring it to the citizens. No, you're fine. Okay.
Every single day, our dedicated team is here to serve the needs of the 2,000 animals that enter our shelter. Abandoned, abused, lost, and loved, we provide these pets with veterinary care, safety, and a soft place to land. We work to ensure that each animal is unified with a family that loves and values them. While adoptions are at the forefront of our work, we have developed a range of vital community programs to help pets and their people living in our community. From the unmean kitten, eyes closed and unable to feed itself, to the family dog that lost its way, our programming ensures that each animal has the means to thrive. We provide lost and found support for pet owners, a pet food pantry, and a resource network for veterinary care and temporary housing for pets in need. Our foster and volunteer programs provide direct life-saving support that enables us to expand our shelter walls and increase our capacity for care. A private nonprofit, Portsmouth Humane proudly boasts a longstanding relationship with the city of Portsmouth to shelter the city's animals. This partnership strengthens our ability to bring much-needed animal services to Portsmouth residents and their pets. Thanks to our powerful partnerships with the city of Portsmouth, fosters, volunteers, community members, and donors, we can achieve our mission to create a safe, compassionate, and inclusive community for people and animals through education and resource programs that elevate animal welfare standards and champion the human-animal bond.
So I would like to introduce the staff. Diana Uchek is the director there. And I don't know everybody there, but I definitely know Diana. Could you pull up the presentation for that? And I just want to go. So I just wanted to give you a brief overview of, you know, that was a brief overview, but just to kind of give you some information as it relates to care. So year-to-date this year, starting in January, the beginning animal count was 565. The total incoming animals between January and now have been 1,315. Total care for beginning count incoming, 1,880. So the 23 care statistics, the increase from last year to this year is 45%. The increase from 21 to 23 is 61%. And the predicted end-of-year total animals to care is 3,230. And again, that's just a prediction. So you may be saying what I said, "Where are all these animals coming from?" Because I asked Diana that as well. COVID. People will home more. And, you know, and if you have those questions, I'm sure she will answer, but those are the same questions I asked. So when people went back to work, it put our animals on the street or they couldn't care for them anymore. And so you saw an influx of animals coming into the shelter. So the cost of care, and this is just something I wanted to provide because I had no idea the cost to care for an animal, what the cost was when it comes to intake exam, what's the average cost per animal, or the 90-day average length of time of stay, which is the shelter, and spraying and neutering. So for a cat, it's $1,475. And that's just if nothing major is wrong with the animal when it comes to the shelter. And again, those are just average numbers. That doesn't cover the cost of what really happens when you have a sick animal that comes into the shelter. And/or if they are there beyond the expected stay of 90 days. So for a dog, you have $1,155 per day. And the length of time for the animal to stay in the shelter is where your heavier costs are. So I didn't, I don't know if any of you have had an opportunity to visit the Portsmouth Animal Shelter or if you know where it is. Okay, well, I think that it would be a great opportunity for you all to go to the shelter and see the great work that this team does with little to nothing. And they definitely care for our animals. I was, I spent quite a little time there and got a chance to walk around and see what was really going on there. And I was very excited for the work that they do. So I would ask Ms. Uchek to come up in case you have any questions or may, just, I don't want her to be too nervous, but she knows her line of work better than I do. So just for a few minutes, if you have any questions.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Terry. And Ms. Uchek, I guess, pleased to meet you. I have been over to the center, but it has been quite some time. I'm sure there may be a few changes with that. But I guess, I mean, looking at these costs, I mean, no one would have thought that this would be, you know, the cost to care for an animal that's not sick, just, you know, routine care. But where do you, I know you have a board and you raise funds, but where does the bulk of the money come from to care for?
So we have a hybrid model of the city contract. We are contracted by the city of Portsmouth to provide animal sheltering services in line with the state code that mandates that each locality should have an animal shelter and an animal control officer. So we receive a monthly income from the city for our contracted services in addition to fundraising initiatives.
And so that's a great question because, again, we don't own the animal shelter. We don't have one.
Okay.
So they just, their name comes because they are in Portsmouth. But if they were to ever shut down because they don't have the funding to continue services, we would be, we wouldn't be able, we wouldn't be able to function. Because there are a lot of, as you see, her intake, a lot of stray dogs or people who turn in their animals to the facility. So I just thought it would be a great opportunity to share that because, again, we don't have a facility, but they're in Portsmouth and we contract them to take our animals.
And are there more animals in one city versus another? I mean, because we're a smaller city, do we have more here than, say, Suffolk? Or how does that work?
It's on, it's consistent with the rest of the population. So we do take in more animals than the city of Suffolk. That being said, we do not take in more animals than the city of Norfolk or Virginia Beach. They have a larger population than we do.
Okay.
Which, no.
Yes.
I don't even want to tell you that.
And how much does it cost to, it costs persons have to pay to adopt?
To adopt a pet? That's a great question. We did have a fee schedule. We're currently working through a pilot program right now to give members of the public the opportunity to choose their own adoption fee. We have found that some people are able to pay a little bit more or others are able to pay a little bit less. And we know that pet ownership, the quality of pet ownership is not in line with the amount of money you have in your bank account. So people can pay their own adoption fees, but they are generally between $70 and $150.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Councilwoman Tillot, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon. You may have mentioned that you currently receive a monthly stipend from the city. Do you know how much that is roughly?
Yes, I believe it's $43,000 plus a little bit more.
Okay. And so based on these numbers, you're predicting about 3,200 animals within this fiscal year. And so, correct me if I'm wrong here. Looking at the numbers that you presented for the dollars per cats and dollars per dog, I basically came with an average of about $1,250. And that would be on an annual basis per animal?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
So the cost that you have per cat and per dog, with the average, it comes to about $1,250 per animal. So you would basically take that dollar amount and times it by the number of projected animals.
Yes.
So it comes to approximately $4 million per year to take care of the animals?
That is what we're looking at if we follow this model, yes. Our budget is written at 1.2 million. And when I did the budget comparison and did a projection at the end of May, we were looking at 1.4 million.
Gotcha.
And again, that's for animals. That's not for administrative costs. That's not for salaries and everything else that's associated.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, Ms. Uchek, is the Humane Society still used as a location for citizens to obtain the tag licenses for their animals?
Yes, sir.
It is. And what is the, you know, the approximate revenue that you're seeing from that type of service?
We do not realize revenue from that. We pay the city for the tags. So after they're sold, we write a check to the city to reimburse.
Okay, okay. Ms. Terry, do you have an idea about how much that?
Not off the.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can't, I can tell you it's a couple hundred dollars a month that we write a check to the city for.
A month?
Between $200 and $300. It depends on the month.
Okay. So is there, is there any enforcement on that as far as requirement to have tags?
Yeah, I think the city has, that would be a lawyer. I don't know if the city has enforcement for cats and dogs to have license and collars. I don't know our code for that off the top.
It falls to animal control.
It does.
The animal control will enforce that.
Oh, animal control enforce, oh, our animal control enforces that. We have city employees that pick up the animals when they're in violation or on the street. And we actually, the city pays those salaries for the animal control. And they enforce the law for the city as it relates to tags. And when, when our residents are in violation of not having their animals properly tagged. Is that what you're asking?
Oh, yeah, you covered it. You covered it. So the, so when you speak of the number of animals that come into the Humane Society control, is, is that mainly from persons bringing them there or picking up unlicensed or untagged?
It's a little bit of both. Animal control responds to complaints for cruelty or animals at large. If there's an animal posing a risk or that is at risk, they'll respond and investigate. And citizens are able to bring animals to us. If they find them, if they're their own pets that they're unable to care for, they bring them straight to us.
And I was there, and I will attest. I saw sick animals. I saw pregnant animals. I saw litters of kittens. I saw people bringing, the animal control people bringing in dogs the size of my hip. And it was like, who does this? So it is an interesting job, you know? And it takes a lot to run it. And they do have one or two volunteers. But it takes a lot to do that. And I commend you all for what you do. I could never do it because I'm scared of it. But, you know, I saw them coming in, they weren't scared. I was like, oh, my God. So council, do you have any more questions?
Councilwoman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, so actually, this question is for Madam Interim City Manager. And it has to do with animal control because the notes that I took when Mr. Tolliver spoke last week were about nuisance animals and animal control and some rumor that we were shutting down animal control. I assume that that's.
A rumor.
A rumor and not true.
Clearly.
So, so if, if somebody encounters a nuisance animal, I know we have a coyote that roams our neighborhood.
We do too.
Is that a 911 call? Or how do we get ahold of animal control to deal with nuisance animals?
You can call animal, you can call animal control. We direct people to not emergency police. But if it's an emergency, if a person or another animal's at risk, they can call 911 and they dispatch to animal control.
Okay. Thank you.
We have a coyote in our neighborhood. We're about to name him. But he's roaming around. My mama thought it was a dog. She said, "Look at that raggedy dog." I said, "No, that's a coyote." Okay, thank you so much.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Last question. And it was related to the speaker, Mr. Tolliver, Sergeant Major Tolliver that came in as well. So these are for just kind of pet animals. I mean, because he was talking about a raccoon or something. So where do they, I mean, y'all not housing any raccoon? I mean, where do they go? I mean, what happens to those?
That would best be answered by animal control. You have to have a special license to handle wildlife. So we do not take in wildlife at our shelter. It really depends on the circumstance. My experience with our animal control officers is that they do a very good job of mitigating and assessing situations. So if you have a raccoon that is in its environment and maybe being a nuisance by like knocking over your trash can, those things are probably best mitigated. If you wanted an animal removed for knocking over your trash can, then maybe a pest control company would be the more appropriate response. But I think animal control can talk to you about the nuance of the responsibilities.
Councilwoman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you for the work that you do. Just for informational purposes, I know my neighbor is a volunteer. How does one contact you guys, the volunteer, to help out?
Thank you for that. I'm familiar with Julie, she's on our staff.
Yes.
We are getting ready to reopen our volunteer program. Our volunteer application is on our website. And that is the best way to get started because when we reopen our program and are sharing our opportunities, we will communicate via email with those interested. Oh, it's www.porsmithhumanesociety.org.
Ms. Uchek, thank you and all of the folks out there at the Portsmouth Humane Society for all the work that you do. We're very grateful to have you doing that work.
Thank you.
Madam Manager, if you could proceed with the next presentation.
Okay. So the next presentation will be waste, from waste management. So I purposely called this presentation Talking Trash because we are talking trash and trash has been talked about trash. So I felt a need to bring this to council at this time deemed appropriate. So one of the things that we are dealing with in the city of Portsmouth is trash. We had the conversation or had a few questions that came out last week. And I'm hoping that, last council meeting, and I'm hoping to address them. But I know that we'll have a lot to discuss. So this is what I consider a deft by PowerPoint. Show you a lot of pictures because I get calls all the time. And I think the best way to provide information is to show you what we are seeing every day in our beautiful city and why enforcement is going to be the leader of ending this type of neglect. So one of the things that we are doing here is we have had an excessive amount of dumping by contractors in our communities. And so what we decided to do is put trailers, not trailers, but trash bins, those, in different locations around the city to help mitigate that. What has happened is contractors have now decided, hey, free trash dumping. But here's the thing. It's to the point where even if they dump there, it's so much better than dumping on the street. We can pick that up. But it just goes to show, this would have been the amount of trash that we would have picked up on that street anyway. And there are two dumpsters there, and I don't know if you can see them. And I definitely have seen that, I ride past there in the mornings, and this is what we see. But we used to see it without the dumpsters. And that would be a normal day. Here is another picture of what we see. When I would ride around on Fridays, this is what I would see around the city. Under bridges. These are contractors. These are not normal, regular, day-to-day residents because they can't even put that much in their car. These, the materials that you're seeing are from contractors. See, this is from tires, contractors. Somebody looked like they knocked down a house or done a renovation and they go there and they dump. This is a normal day on Portsmouth Boulevard and Cavalier Boulevard. I took that picture Monday. This is a back alley. Now, you can't get down this street on your own. You have to take a truck, a type of, all of those tires. You have to take a vehicle back there to be able to dump that. Just, and it's in the cut. Okay, but before I go there. So this is why I'm bringing this to you because these are the issues that we're facing in Portsmouth. A lot of the contractors come and they do work and we don't have any way or in the past, it just wasn't a priority. So contractors around the seven cities have decided that Portsmouth is the new dumping ground. They're not, you know, the violations and everything else, but we're going to fix that. But I just wanted to give council a quick and dirty view of what we are seeing every day around the city of Portsmouth. And we actually put two dumpsters on, I think it's Brandon Lane in Churchland? Yep. Because this is really going on in our city. So I'll stop here on this and we're going to move to another thing and we'll come back to what I'm proposing we do to address these issues. So let's talk alleyways. So we have a code right now for collection of materials, positioning for materials for collection. So before I go into this, our regular, me as a resident, you as residents and council, when you put your trash can out, you put your trash can out, you put your black trash can, you put your blue trash can, and any bulk trash you put on the front of your lawn for them to pick up. So you have your trash man that comes and you have your recycling guy who comes on the recycling days and you have your bulk trash guy who rides around and looks for trash as well. So, or bulk trash. So what we have here is one of our own codes that says all garbage, trash, paper. Everything can go on your sidewalk near the curb as possible or between the sidewalk and the curb except where public alleyways are provided in which instance refuse for collection shall be placed in such alley. What does that mean, Mimi? That means in certain parts of the city, on their front, they can put the blue trash cans and they can put bulk trash. But if they have an alley, they can put the regular trash cans. Makes no sense, but that's code. And what we have here is bulk refuse. Now, remember, your blue cans can go out, your bulk leaves, plastic bags, tree trunks, whatever you do can go in the front. But this says bulk shall always be placed as near to the curb as possible or between the sidewalk and the curb, shall not be placed in public alleys even where same or some are provided. So in other words, you can put everything on the front. You can't put bulk trash in the alleys, but you can put your trash can in the alley. So we have our guys picking up all day on the regular street and then they have to go in the alleyway and pick up black trash cans. And I'm going to show you why this is an issue. What used to be has now, doesn't help our environment for where we are now. So these are the alleyways. These are our bulk trash, where our trash trucks, not bulk, the regular trash trucks. Where I have it circled in orange or where trees are hanging there, you know how big a trash truck is. So you have trees hanging on top of the trash trucks. Look how small that alley is. Again, this picture can only show you something small, but it has, if you ever, the impact of really being out there would change your whole perspective. And here you have the picture down. You have all these things holding and enclosed in this trash truck. And you see the little trash can right there? You have to have people on the back of your trucks to pick these trash trucks, these trash cans up. That's an issue in the alleys when you could put it on the regular street because your blue cans go there, your bulk trash goes there. Why are we going down these alleys? And we've gotten complaints about citizens calling and saying, "You messing, you're on my grass." Or, "You're bothering my fence." Or, "You tore down my pole." So just to get an idea of what we're really looking at, see how close this trash truck is to this tree? Because, and that's the other side. These must be superheroes with capes that go through. And I commend our drivers because this has to bother. You have to be stressed out every day going through an alley trying to figure out how do you not destroy a $300,000 truck? Trying to get it, trying to pick up a trash can that should be on the street. Again, this is just another view of the picture. And see how the trees come down? Because those trees don't belong to us. Those are citizen trees. And they're going in alleys trying to pick up trash cans that, again, could be placed on the street just like the recycle cans and everything else. Now, before I go there. So this is just, I wanted to give you a view of what our drivers are going through as it relates to picking up trash in the alleys. And so I'll be coming to council with some recommendations.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Ms. Terry, I'm just curious. How large of an issue is the, are the alleyways? Where are we talking about in the city where these alleyways are?
Port Norfolk, Water, is it? I'm sorry. Mr. Stallings is our Director of General Services who's over waste management. And we talked about the areas. Could you, you mind coming here for one second? We were near the Waterview area. We were in Port Norfolk.
Good evening, Mr. Stallings, sir.
We're talking, like I said, Port Norfolk, along, over in Port Norfolk.
Could you please come closer to the microphone, sir?
Sorry about that. I guess also, Port Norfolk, if you're all unaware, we also have found a dead body over there also. So that's one of the things we find. But also up near the Trachem Bridge area, over Shannon Door, all of those alleys back over there that runs over that way also.
Yeah, so it sounds like these are some isolated communities where they got the benefit of putting trash in alleyways instead of the front. So it doesn't, okay, so that should be easily saw.
It should be. But is that the council?
Right.
Yeah.
And these trucks get beat up. If you could look to the front side behind the cab, we're always replacing belts and hydraulic lines. It gets damaged half the time. We've got to go out and tow the trucks back in because it gets caught up out there.
And one of the things, as Stallings, come stand over here. And one of the things that we, that I was able to see is Port Norfolk, the way the roads are, is like a round, like a V upside down, not a U, upside down. So when the trucks go from the alley to the street to the alley, it damages because the trucks hit the bottom. Every time, it's like a sink. And it, we're talking vehicles that cost 300-plus thousand dollars. And they have people on the back. The, we leave, we're leaving ourselves vulnerable, but it's also wearing and tearing on our vehicles. So that was just to give you an idea. So, uh, that was just to give you an idea of what we're dealing with.
Councilman Hugel, so you have the floor.
No.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, evening, Mr. Stallings. So, so, uh, I did one of those Friday ride-arounds with the interim city manager and Mr. Stallings, and we followed trash trucks through the alleys. Uh, it is a couple of neighborhoods, and this isn't gonna be popular in those neighborhoods, but given the number of calls that we've been receiving about people who are frustrated that their cans supposed to get picked up on Tuesday, and it doesn't get picked up on Wednesday, uh, it's, it's watching our, the, the folks who work for Mr. Stallings, who are driving these trucks, so it's three people on a truck. That's three people that could each be driving their own truck that's got the, the claw. Uh, the trucks are going three miles an hour, so they don't knock down fences and hit trees. Uh, even slower than that across those intersections that the city manager was speaking to. So, there's, we're, we're tying up valuable resources now. We're talking about people who could be out picking up, uh, trash in the claw trucks, uh, in neighborhoods where they're already required to put their, um, recycling out in front of the house, because we only have claw trucks, I think, to pick up recycling, right? So, so, uh, yeah, it's gonna inconvenience some neighbors, but the inconvenience should more than be paid back in, in allowing us to use, uh, the resources, really the people that we're talking about, uh, to get, uh, the rest of the city's trash picked up, uh, timely.
And the beautiful part about inconvenience is they have to go out and put the blue cans out anyway.
Right. Yeah, so, so, to your, to your question earlier, uh, it's kind of a limited problem, and, and it's gonna be inconvenience for a few, but benefit for many. So, so I think, uh, the city manager is teeing up the right discussion here. This is one of those process things where going out and looking at it, and, and then scratching your head and saying, what the heck are we doing? This, this is classic, uh, process improvement.
So, one of the things, and the only reason I'm aware, um, not the only reason, but I went, they have, waste management has mandatory meetings, or I'll call a mandatory meeting to have an opportunity to meet with staff. And make it a safe space where you can talk and say that this is an issue, and it won't fall on deaf ears. Because I'm, I know this is not a just-now issue, this has been an issue that's been ongoing, but I think it has fallen on deaf ears in the past, and not understanding how to look to see what was determined. I had no idea that there was actually an ordinance in place that allowed this to happen. I wasn't sure if it was a, a gentleman's handshake, or it was a pre-COVID situation, but understanding that we had a code that supported this, I felt a need to bring it before council. And it also allows the employees to see that we hear you, and we understand, and your safety is first. And so, I, I can't imagine the trauma that one of our drivers must go through, saying, I hope I don't hit this. The anxiety, I won't say trauma, the anxiety. And thank God that they are licensed and, um, are really good at their jobs. So, um, I'm not finished yet, but, uh-uh, because I see you wanna talk. Oh, wait, no, 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 no.
Well, Councilman Tillage, Councilman Tillage and Dr. Whitaker and Vice Mayor has a question, so.
And I have some more, I just don't wanna get stuck on this, because we have a lot more to cover.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I have three questions. Um, the first one, first, I completely support this initiative, especially making sure that it's efficient for the workers, uh, safety, efficiency, production, everything. Uh, but my question is kind of playing devil's advocate here.
Okay.
So, in neighborhoods such as Port Norfolk, where are many people, there's a lot of multifamily units, there's also, a lot of houses don't have driveways, and so there's a lot of street parking. Um, so the city would have to take into consideration on trash days in that neighborhood about the vehicles. And so, then, then you're not fighting, um, public alley situations, but then you're, you're fighting street cars, trying to maneuver the truck to get the trash cans. And so, that's just something to think about.
But that's a fair point, and I don't wanna get too far, because I know, I don't wanna forget what I'm gonna say. So, the fair point is this, the blue cans are already out there. The parking is already a situation, the cans and the bulk is already out there. So, there were, and those are done on trash days, anyway. So, um, again, we talk about inconvenience and inconvenience, and I just don't want you to forget that the, they do it anyway. Except for now, it'll be a blue can and a black can, instead of just a blue can.
Gotcha. And the reason I brought this up is, um, I know back, probably when I was in elementary school in Port Norfolk, um, there used to be a lot of no, no parking signs on the third Monday of the month, and that was for street sweeping. And so, that's just something I was thinking, you know, moving forward, if we're gonna do this route, to do such a thing for trash days. Um, my second question is neighborhoods such as Newport, um, that wasn't one of the ones that was, were mentioned, but do they get their trash picked up on their, behind their homes, or is that, or is their trash cans on the street?
Newport's on the street.
On the main street?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, there's two now.
All right, gotcha. And my last question is not really related to waste management, but the public alleys. Um, who's responsible for the upkeep of public alleys? Is that the city's responsibility? Because I heard mentioned there was a lot of potholes.
Yeah, so, it depends. So, like, say this tree, is it on the line of the city easement, or is it in a neighbor's, uh, or in a resident's yard? We run into that all the time. And we have the, it, it just depends on where it's located, on the easement, is it too close to this fence? So, all of those things come into play. So, I don't wanna say yes, and I don't wanna say no, because it's, to me, it's on a case-by-case basis, based on where the tree is located.
Yeah, so my question is just more pertaining just to the road itself. I understand the trees, how trees can be placed on either side of the property line. But I, I noticed in some of the pictures, um, and it was mentioned that there are potholes in the roads, but then also, looking at the pictures, you see the branches that are overtaking electricity lines. Since they're overtaking electricity lines, the city would have, would be able to cut those back, correct?
Mm-mm, because it may not be our tree. And what happens is, I don't even wanna bring this up, but what happens is, when we start cutting, when we start doing things like that, citizens complain. Why are you cutting this tree? That tree gives us shade. Uh, why are you doing this? Because you're impeding on our property, that's not your tree. I mean, so, again, I trust me, I understand, and what you're saying are fair points. Do I have every answer? Is everybody gonna be happy about this? Absolutely not. Um, but again, imagine that tree with, uh, or somebody, perfect example. You have an elderly person that may live there, or you have someone who, um, can, they put the trash can out, they can't afford to cut the tree down. And it's their tree, the city comes out and says, hey, I can't, we're gonna, we can't cut that branch, it's your tree. You're gonna start getting phone calls. And then if they cut the tree, they have to get Dominion. Dominion has gotta reach out to whoever to make sure that they're not infringing on something else. Or you cut somebody's power off for that day, and then they don't show, I mean, it just adds so, it's a trickling effect. So, um, again, there's a lot, but the remedy to just be done with it is in the front. But those were great points. Was that all?
Oh, this is.
Okay.
Vice, Vice Mayor Lucas Barth, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Ms. Terry, Mrs. Stallings. Um, question, I guess, uh, residential properties, commercial properties, is a, it's a different system that picks up the waste management. Okay, so I guess they are backstaffed, and their pickups are, are delayed. Um, but there's been some people who have said that they have gotten calls from the fourth floor inspections to say that their commercial cans are overrun. Um, but I guess that's not a city issue, so.
They pay for it, they contract those services out to someone outside of the city, of course. Because those, if you notice, those cans have those things on the side, those big waste cans. Yeah, those, they, they're kinda green.
Right.
You see them? But those, they contract those services out, and they have nothing with the city.
But the, but inspections is calling if they see an overflow of trash outside of it.
Right, because inspections, you know, the whole point for inspections is to keep the community clean, we have neighborhood inspectors. So, from anything from overflowing trash, you need to dump your trash, because you don't wanna begin having rodents, coyotes, and anything else building up that may affect your residents. Because most of those commercial properties, even in Port Norfolk, are backed up to residential, um, homes. So, you don't want to start bringing in nu- nuisance, uh, animals, rodents, um, because of an overflowing trash. And that's their job, to write a violation if there's an issue. Um, again, we're all across the nation experiencing a shortage in staffing. However, um, when you're paying for a service, you usually want what you're paying for.
That's, and that's been the issue, because they saying now they having to take the trash someplace else, where they're paying for services, to have those companies to come and, and pick up twice a week, or whatever it is.
But again, we have a couple of dumping sites, we understand. Um, not for a major contractor, it's for our residents, but, uh, clearly contractors are going. But, you know, we're just trying to mitigate, we're just trying to figure out how to best service our citizens. Businesses are paying citizens as well.
Right.
Trash versus commercial dumps is a whole different situation for us. But we're just trying to give some of our citizens and businesses a relief. Um, I watched something yesterday where one of, in Pennsylvania, Philadelphia, Philadelphia, I think it was, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, there, they had to go on the news and apologize for not picking up trash. And their trash is, their waste management is not connected to the city, it's a private company, um, for citizens. And they're not hap- citizens are not happy at all. Um, but again, uh, for us, it's, our neighborhood inspectors are doing their jobs by getting out there and showing violations. And hopefully, that puts more onus and accountability on the contractors that they have picking up their gar- their bulk trash.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Ms. Terry, this is just a note for future discussion. Uh, this whole alleyway has brought up some other, uh, issues. I'm, I'm just curious, is it something for thought? Uh, does the city need to even, uh, be in the business of maintaining still public alleyways? What's the benefit to the city of even having the public alleyways? Um, and that's something for future discussion, because I do know there was a case that came before council where, uh, a private entity actually requested for the expansion of their property, I think, to include some formerly public property. I think they were expanding a daycare or something like that. But, you know, I'm, I'm wondering if that's worth something to look into? Do we even need, especially with what Mr. Tillage raised about potholes maintaining? Uh, so that's just a thought that came up as we were discussing.
Yeah, a- and I, I think we all see that it's becoming a growing issue. And the more, um, we dig into policy code, how is it gonna benefit the citizens? And what is the benefit of the city for doing it? And what we can do is kind of do a little research and come back and actually provide that information, and council can make a determination on how they would like to move forward in that process. Um, I got some more stuff.
Yes, ma'am, if, if you are, would please continue with your, your presentation.
Don't go nowhere. No, no, no. Mr. Stallings likes to talk about trash, so, um, city code violation. So, where we are, based on all the information that we've seen thus far, as it relates to refuse, garbage, debris, trash, and illegal dumping, code says, what is the violation and what is punishable? Uh, as a violation of this section shall be punishable by a fine, not less than $250 or more than $2,500, and confinement in jail for not more than 12 months, either or both. So, here's the thing, the problem is, we have not been enforcing at a level that people would stop doing it. I think we're gearing up to that, and to me, this is just an opportunity to put everyone on notice that it's coming. Um, neighborhood inspectors are now, um, out doing more, um, identifying those areas and writing more violations. What you can see when you ride through the neighborhoods, those little orange stickers, you'll see them placed on something, that means that neighborhood inspector has been there, and is, uh, issuing a warning to have a date where they need to pick up this trash. And what I will say is, uh, one day, in Councilman Barnes, uh, Stallings and I were out looking at trash, or doing something around the city, and someone dropped a safe in the middle of the street on Greenwood, Greenwood and Victory, right at that cross, I was standing out there, he waved at me. Somebody literally off the back of their truck dropped a safe, not a small safe, it was.
Like four meters?
Right, yeah. And literally dropped off their truck and left it. So, cars are flowing into traffic, and could have, that could have been awful. So, fortunately, we had one of our bulk trucks that was available come and pick that up. But that happens around the city all the time. Um, and again, it's unfortunate, because we had not been really, uh, addressing it in the way that we're gonna start addressing violators at this point in time. Um, so, actions. We have current actions, and we have future actions. So, our current action is, we've created part-time positions to address citywide trash collection. If you have seen, we have, uh, we have now added part-time staff to go around the city and pick up. We've seen it happen in other localities, we decided to engage and do that here. I just got a report today, and a 447 bags of trash was picked up just in the month of June, and is it 337 have been picked up to date? Yeah, to date. You'll see our drivers around in trucks, and they have little orange garbage bags. You'll be able to, definitely, you're seeing them, identify those. Listen, 447 bags of trash, that's just stuff that they go around to neighborhoods that, and pick up in a cycle, in one month. And it's not even the end of the month, and they've already, they're already at 337 bags of trash. Not the trash day bags, stuff that they pick up every day. So, I'm glad Mr. Stallings had that idea, because we ride and we look at what other localities does, because I've been big on cleaning the city up, I didn't understand. And even, again, I'll, um, refer to Mr. Toler, he said, and I've seen it too, you're driving, or you're sitting in traffic, somebody literally would throw a bag of trash, everything they eating, and diapers, outside while they're at the light. And I don't understand that behavior, but we're just gonna do what we can to address it, and hopefully, start addressing it in violations. Because again, when people have to pay, they move a little different. So, we're adding dumping stations around the city to encourage residents not to dump illegally. So, I've seen couches, I've seen somebody maybe get kicked out, and they throw their couch outside. Um, but again, we're engaging in a different way, in hopes that this will reduce some of that illegal dumping. Um, creating signage, uh, currently creating signage to identify, that identifies code. And I'll show you where we are, so that in case you want to add something, if I forgot, or I left something off, this would be an opportunity as to say, you're gonna tell me. So, the future actions are bulk trash pickups for efficiency and effectiveness. Online requests and schedules. So, this came from, in Chesapeake, you have to go online and request a bulk trash pickup. So, there's a time limit, let's say within, uh, I think a shut-off for us, we haven't worked out all of the details, but let me just tell you where we're going. Right now, are currently, our drivers ride around looking for bulk trash. That is such a inefficient way of doing business. Because on those days, we could have drivers out, they would get a list, you would go online, schedule your request, and say, hey, today, and the, and it would be, we've already done a test, uh, Mr. Gagola has, um, started working on the online. So, basically, you go online and you request your trash, or, no, no, your bulk to be picked up, and it's scheduled. The cutoff time would be 3 o'clock, we'll work that out the day before. It would be, the cutoff time would be the day before. The drivers would come in, and they would see, based on your trash schedule, what they have to pick up in bulk, because it's scheduled on your trash day. So, now, they're. So now, they're not riding around hoping to get a call or hoping to see something that somebody, one of the other drivers say, hey, I'm driving by, there's a bulk trash, you need to come pick it up. Now these are scheduled. You know who's picking up what. This would also help us with contractors. What do you mean, Mimi? So if I have a bulk trash pickup, I know that you've called that in. If I go and you've now knocked down your whole house, you know, let's say a sidehouse, we'll be able to send an inspector to be able to tell, was this a contractor? Was this us? Those are the conversations we can have. Because contractors, you see what's going on. We'll get into that in a minute, but bulk trash pickups will be scheduled. Online, online request. And so that now relieves some of our drivers. We can have those drivers on regular trash pickup, because now they're not riding around looking for bulk trash. Because it's scheduled. We know what we're doing. Okay, so now we're going to annual renting slash leasing waste fleet to reduce repair costs and replacement. This is something that we're looking at because it's cheaper. We're in communication with a, a local company that may be able to assist us. It helps because we have issues with staffing up for the, the bulk trash repair. That's a big machine. That's, when something goes wrong, something goes wrong and that truck could be down. What we're looking at is fleet replacement and replacing some of those trucks with newer trucks, with new trucks. And what they do, they're on a schedule. Certain things the company will fix. We were not bogging our people down with, and holding our waste fleet up for a repair that we can't do. Now is, the onus is on because we're renting on the company. But again, that's something we're, we're in communication, we've had conversations. Now we just need to make a, a decision for what's best for the city. Trash collection schedule dates changed to better service. So this is one that I've gotten, and probably from everybody on the dais. When we start looking at trash collection schedules, we were saying, what in the world is going on? It's not, something's off. So when we start digging a little deeper in the schedules, the schedule has been, our people work four tens. So they work four days away, 10 hours a day. And they're off on Wednesdays. So one of the things we changed immediately is not only were the employees off that are in operations, but our admin staff was off too, on Wednesdays. We are a city that runs Monday through Friday. And so, one, we put the admin back to work five days a week, eight hours a day. So when you call on a Wednesday, or any other day about your service, you will have someone to have a response. And it won't sit, and the calls pile up, and it just never goes anywhere. So someone is now available to handle your calls five days a week. So that was, we changed immediately. The other thing was, we looked, that schedule for Wednesdays off has been in place since about 1992. When I looked, I pulled up an article, 1992. They made the decision to have Wednesdays off for trash days. And go to a four-day work week. So what we're looking at now is changing the schedule. So most Mondays are our holidays off, okay? And so, when you're off on Mondays, the city is closed, then you have Wednesdays that they're off anyway. So when we look at our holiday schedule, I'm looking at 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15 holidays in the course of a calendar year. For us, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 of those holidays are on Mondays. So now you're dealing with overtime. You're dealing with days, right. So we're, we've reviewed that, and we would like to go to Mondays off. So they would do the four tens, but they would be Tuesday through Friday. This would save us $12,000 per day by doing this. Because you think about it, the expenses, overtime, the expenses, holiday time, the expenses, some other costs that we just won't even address. And we have temp workers that we are paying on those days as well. So just by changing the schedule, that's $12,000 a day for eight days that we have off on Mondays. And that's just a quick and dirty calculation. Now, again, all of these things we want to roll out, but we understand for our citizens, it takes a lot for them to digest. So we're looking at, if this is July, we have to get everything in place and advertise and ensure everybody's on the same page. Probably the first week of, the first day of October. We want to give them a little time to make some major adjustments, because this will be a lot for some. So, again, just as a recap, we're looking at changing the trash collection days. Instead of Wednesday off, they would now move four tens from Tuesdays to Fridays. Boom. That would relieve a lot of your phone calls from citizens that says, it's a holiday, nobody picked the trash up. Well, you got eight holidays in that year. That would be why. Cameras to identify and apprehend violators. So one of the things we're having an issue with is that we are now adding cameras all over the city. So this will help reduce some of those violators who come out and dump that are contractors. I think the last conversation, or one of the questions you had at the previous council meeting, Councilman Whitaker, was reducing the fee for pickup, bulk pickup, I, I, I think you asked bulk pickup.
It was dealing with the tree limbs that are on the side of the street.
Yeah, so right now, residents don't have to pay for that. The problem is, when they hire a contractor to come out, and I've had the call, and I wish I would have added that picture. A contractor, and this is what we're running into, and I hope I'm not taking too much time, but I think it's very important. What we're running into now is that a citizen, senior citizen may call because she has to get a tree cut down. She gets the tree cut down, she pays the contractor to take the tree away. The contractor says, call the city. Now, one, he's already taken her money, and two, she's calling the city and say, y'all didn't pick up this tree. So, we're trying to figure out how to bridge the gap to say, the contractor needs to be responsible for taking and hauling that tree away because it is part of our regulation. I think it's part of our code. And I forget, how much is it? 250 per pound or? Up to 10, I'm not pound, ton. Yeah, and we have not been enforcing it. So, to help our citizens, we're not going to tell her no. But we need to start holding these contractors responsible, because when you ask, you know, when our inspectors ask, let me see, did you pay for this? They've paid for it. They've paid the contractor for it. But the contractor puts the tree on the street and tells them, oh, the city will pick it up. So we got a couple of things that we need to try to bridge the gap and communicate and actually inform our citizens, this is a problem, and they're taking advantage of you. But we're, we're going to work toward that as well. And so, potential signage. So these are a couple of.
Excuse me, Madam Manager, could you take a couple of questions? Because I, I just, I know that they, this is regarding probably what you were just talking about.
Okay.
Councilman Barnes had a question, and I'm sure he, he'd like to get it out, and then Dr. Whitaker.
I have a lot. I was going to wait.
Wait.
Okay.
I was just putting mine in for the end.
Okay, no worries. Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Yeah. I, I hope that council will consider the issue of the citizens not paying for trees to be removed, because it, it becomes a, it's a safety issue for one. And as far as the contractors getting over on citizens and removal, I think that if it was generally known to the public that this is a service that the city is going to be providing to remove those tree limbs or the, the tree trunks that, from the street, that they would know now in contracting that they shouldn't be paying for that. But I, I just think that that should be a service that our tax dollars should take care of because, because of the, the safety issue involved in it. And also, it, it, it has come down to whether the citizen can, or either the inspector who's there believes that it was a contractor that did this, or a citizen who did it. And I really don't think it should be coming down to that, that I think we have the resources to provide it as a service that the citizens already pay for through the refuse tax.
Okay, fair point. But here's the, here's my concern, and I think this is something that's going to take a further conversation. Because tree limbs versus removal of a 30-year-old tree, and I think if you saw it, you would kind of, we could probably meet somewhere in the middle. Because what happens is, one, I, okay, for instance, my dad cut down a couple of years ago, the trees in the backyard. So, I went back there with my chainsaw, cut the trees down with him, and dragged them from the backyard to the front yard. And I got the whips to prove it. Piled them up real pretty on the lawn. So we did that. So the truck drove by at least 12 times. So I said, let me find out what's going on. So my mother called and said, hey, we got tree limbs out here. Tree limbs versus a tree cut down from a contractor, completely different. But let's stick with tree limbs. So we called, and they told her, at that time, I wasn't working for the city, hey, a contractor cut that down. So, she said, well, what do you mean, a contractor cut it down? He said, because nobody could pile it up that pretty. Literally. So one of the questions that I had for the inspectors since I've been here, how do you determine a contractor, and how do you make that decision? Do you call and do you knock on the door? Do you ask the resident? So we have to kind of figure, we have to work together in our communication because you have some inspectors that go to the door, and they say, hey, I see you have a two-ton tree trunk in your front yard. Did you pay somebody to cut that down, or did a relative? I love our seniors because they're honest, most of them. And they, I remember this one, she said, no, a company did. And she meant it. And she says, well, I paid them to take it away. So, what happens in that instance is education. Tree trunks versus tree leaves and limbs. I think we need to define what's contractor-worthy and what's residential because they pay bulk trash and refuse. Because I'm concerned that they're going to start renovating whole homes like you see here. They're going to leave it on the front, because we've seen that too. And when they leave it on the front, again, the city is going to be responsible. That comes with a price of contracting your service for renovation. So I think the best thing for us to do is find that happy median that will relieve our citizens and not put that heavy burden on them. But hold contractors responsible so everybody won't come over here in Portsmouth and start doing this level of work. Because one of the things with permits and inspections, when they start renovating and getting, and start doing these renovations on homes, they're supposed to get a trash can. Those big long box where you put and dump. Well, we have contractors that don't get the trash can because they want to save the $350, and they'll put it on the front street. So, again, we got layers that we need to address. Again, I agree that in some respect, our citizens, it would relieve our citizens, and they're paying for a service. But how do we address those contractors? Or, not how, we're in the process of tightening up our processes and procedures for permits. Because every day, the inspector should go down and say, what new contracts or what new developments are coming up? Who's doing renovations? Because all those things have to have a permit. And they should be going around seeing if they are in compliance with what is required so that our citizens won't run into the issue of being, taken advantage of for those services. It's, it's, it's quite a bit.
Yeah, that's why I said, I hope the council, my issue isn't with renovations. Mine's was simply dealing with the, the trees that citizens cut down. And, and again, I think that that should be a service. The, the citizens should not have to decide in whether to cut a tree down because of safety issues. They shouldn't be taking into account the cost of having it removed. That should already be a service we provide. So like I said, that's something that council is, I hope we will have a very good discussion on that.
And what I'm hoping to do is, when we tighten up our policies and procedures as it relates to compliance, and we have, the, the staff is now on the same page. When I meet with inspectors, and the inspectors on the fourth floor for permits, I also meet with waste management inspectors. Because to me, they all work together. Because if there's a violation and you have an inspector, they can communicate with each other to say, I'm on this street, there's an issue. Can you come check this out? It shouldn't matter if you're in one division or another. It all should work together. So what I will ask council is, because that is a cost associated with removal, and because we're already in budget, that the cost may be addressed during the budget session at the beginning of the year, but it gives us an opportunity to tighten up our processes. And then it gives me an opportunity to say, how much money do we actually receive from contractors that do it? Because at this point, if residents are paying for that service outside of what they normally pay for what their taxpayer dollars are, I can distinguish, and I would be able to come back to council and say, council, we're not even getting enough dollars associated with residents calling for this pickup for free. Contractors are only paying this. And we will be able to make a unanimous decision because you see what the cost, was the cost worth the benefit?
Plus, plus it removes that subjectivity, you know, like you dealt with, with your situation. You know, what's, what's the litmus test that one inspector uses to determine whether it was a contractor versus the individual? So, that's why I'm looking.
Yeah, those conversations, and, and again, we need to tighten up our processes because everybody should be doing the same thing. Everybody, if there's a, and, one thing, the bulk online will definitely, because if you're a citizen, and you're, you know, you are a citizen. If you, if you just cut down your tree, you're going to go online and make the request. So I'm going to know that you cut your trees down, and I'm going to know that those are your limbs. If you're not a citizen, if you're a contractor, and you just did a whole tree cut, somebody, if you not picking that up, bulk is not going to pick that up unless you go online and request it. So we'll actually be able to make some determination based on the level of bulk that we'll be picking up because they have to request it online. There will be identifiers to say, tree, renovation. All of that stuff now can be identified. And I think it gives us the opportunity to look at information and data that will be us, able to help us make a better decision for the city. I know you want, I'm sorry. Am I done? Okay, I, I want to see these signs. I know you got a lot. So, potential signage. These are the signs that we came up with. And it would be nice to kind of, if council could take a look and give me a little feedback. Because, or, do we do them all? But the only reason I haven't pushed them all out, because I don't want to miss anything. And the more eyes, not the more eyes, but if council looks at them and can say, I get it, I don't like it, or you need to add more, or you need to add less, before we start making signs and planting them around the city. Right now, I think we, somewhere along the line, they stopped doing signs because they didn't think that they were efficient or effect, they weren't effective. But how can I prosecute you for violation if there's no sign to say, you in trouble? And citing the code to support being in trouble for violation, you know? And so there'll be a number for them to call. We're creating that as well. And the fine is $2,500. So the consensus request, and, and then I just want to say this, and then I'll get to Councilman Barnes' questions. So the whole point today was the one ordinance that we all looked at as. So the whole point today was the one ordinance that we all looked at as it relates to allowing trashcans to be picked up on the curve with the recycle cans and the bulk trash instead of in the alleyways citywide. So a code, the ordinance would have to be rewritten to be able to state that. I, I don't remember which one the councilman said it. But for the signs for moving your vehicle, that's going to come back too, because we got street sweeping, we're looking at that as well. And we are trying to identify the, the dates. So we're looking at between April and October for street sweeping, for assert all of the streets, and then the time, the period, and the season. So we're, we're looking at other localities to see what they do. But I know it would be, the reason it came up for me, I was driving down the street, and I saw the street sweeper sweep around the truck. And I thought, imagine if they went, what are you doing? Isn't that clean? And so it's just, it's not effective what we're doing currently. So we're looking at how to change that, and it would actually give us the opportunity to address some of the other issues associated with a cleaner city. So.
Councilman Barnes, so you have a thought?
Well, first I do want to say, this was an informative presentation. I'm definitely for that. And, and when I said I had a lot, I got more than, more than one. I don't want to, I got a dissertation and stuff. But to, to hear about that, we want to make sure that we, we clean our city, I'm definitely for that. Somebody who travels a lot, especially during the summertime, I go to other cities, and I do notice that they're a little bit cleaner than us. And, and I wish that our city gets to that point, so I'm thankful that you guys are actually doing that. So to get to that point, I know you say you picked, you picked up four hundred and some bags last month, and three hundred and some this month. Do you believe that it will go down, since this is a new service that we're providing, and some of it was probably from other months as well?
Well, it depends on how our citizens, you know, it starts, I probably can't say that. What I will say, we have to show pride in ownership. And for a person to do that makes me question. So I'm thinking that if we, if they see that we're taking pride in what we do, it will allow you as a citizen to say, let me clean up my area. And let's look at how we can do better. I just, I don't understand the mentality of that, but I know I like a clean city. I go to other cities, and I'm like, how are they keeping it this clean? You know, and another question we get is along the highway stretch, VDOT covers that. That's not the city. But we get calls from citizens to say, how come you haven't cleaned up this exit ramp? And how come you haven't, VDOT, the state is responsible for that. And we're in violation when we impede on their territory. So I hold this pretty dear to me. This is my home, you know, this is the house. I don't want my house dirty. And so I just hope that as citizens see how much pride we have in ownership, and we'll be looking at signs, and I'll be bringing all of that, the new Portsmouth signs are coming, you know, with your input. It's just things that I think around the city that will beautify the city and give us a little more pride and ownership. And then, I don't, I'm tired of contractors, and I'm tired of people feeling like they can just come over here and do what they want to do. Because we're not pressing charges, or we don't have appropriate cameras. We're going to have everything in a minute. And I'm just putting them on notice, that you tell our city, you throw stuff in, in our yards or on the highway, you will be penalized. You are in violation, and the best way to hit somebody is in their pocket.
And, and to go to that point, the, as far as, because I've called you numerous of times about trash. Are we going to, well, two questions within this. I know that we said that we're going to inform people, whatever the case. Can we also do some informative measures as far as posting it on our social media?
Yeah.
Also send it out in the bill, letting them know that we're going to be enforcing. And also as far as advertising, I've said this before, as far as when we, because I know we use social media, we use Facebook a lot. There's a, there's a method up there where you can sponsor ads, ads to get it out to more people. I think that's something that we should look at to, to, to make sure that we get that out, because if people do know that, they will get found, like you said, if it's hitting their pockets, they're going to most likely stop doing those things. So I would like to see us do more advertising and try to reach more people through our social media as well, because it, it's possible that my generation is part of doing that, and, and they're on Instagram or Facebook and all the, yeah.
And another thing, we want to get back to adopt, adopt the area. We used to adopt neighborhoods, we used to adopt streets. Name it in somebody's name that, you know, may have been a pillar in your community. Somewhere along the line, we got away from that. And, you know, when you show pride in your area, and you come to an area where you're familiar with who this belongs to, or who's this name, namesake, it kind of like, oh, it's a level of respect. I don't know where this fell off, but I'm hopeful that we will get back on track. And I will, we're taking all of those things in consideration when we move forward.
And, you know, you know, I'm, I'm from their homes. And as I was growing up, when they threw people out, they would put their, their furniture and things out into the front. Do you know if they're, they're picking that up, or they're leaving it out there? And, you know, that also, because we want those communities to be, look beautiful as well, because they'll take some sense and pride, and that'll help with crime in their communities, the broken glass theory. When people see a broken glad, see broken glass, they tend, that's where you tend to see more trash, more crime and things of that nature. But do you know if they're picking that up?
That's a great, and I'm glad you actually brought that up, because we just addressed that. So in one of the mandatory meetings we had with permits and inspections, there is a certain allowable, let me just say this, each division is responsible for certain things. So one of the things that I can share is, we, that we had, we had where someone was put out, I won't say put out, but I'll say put out, because all this stuff was on the corner.
Right.
And so in the meeting, because I brought all the inspectors together from all the different low, you know, different levels, and said, hey, how come you didn't pick that up? Or how come you didn't cite them? And they said, well, we call, we looked up their information or this address, and there was nobody that had water service on that property. Well, how do you have, how are you living in there and not water service? Still in water, that's the only way I can tell you. So they had cut the water on and was living in that property. Okay, so here's the caveat. Permits and inspections couldn't do anything because they didn't have water service. Or our inspectors for waste management couldn't do anything because they didn't have water service. So I said, well, they may not have had service, but if they were renting, there's a landlord who owns the property. You're going to find him. Or there is an opportunity and another way to see who has the property in their name. We have the assessor's office. So we took a trip down to the assessor's office and say, now, let me introduce you to someone who, if you have a question in ownership, here is how you find out. Because they were told, well, part of their compliance is, if the place doesn't have water, they can't find a viol, they can't find the person to, to put a violation on. There are other ways, but it's understanding what resources you have available. That was one of the, this, how the conversation got started. Somebody threw all their stuff out, or got put out. A neighbor called and said, nobody picked this up. Found out that they were in there with no water all that time. And so now, not only did we lose out on the water, because, you know, there's no name on it, but we knew something was going on. Somebody should have addressed it. So now, we're going through every process to ensure that it, those things, people know the resources that are available to be able to address those issues, and we end up picking that up. And now that we know who owned the property, they got the bill. Because it's your, hey, I'm going to get you, you the landlord, you take your people to court. But somebody got to pay for this.
So as, as far as PRHA neighborhoods, we're making them, we're holding them responsible if.
So PRHA has their own trash. They pay, well, they, they have their own, like, when I went to, what's behind Lincoln Park? Swanson Home? Swanson. So I went out to Swanson, and they had, everybody got their own little trashcan. But they used to have the big trashcans, and the, the community said that's too far to walk. So they actually have different, everybody has their own trashcans. We pick up out there. But we charge PRHA, and they reimburse us for, you know, it's part of their bill. But yeah, we pick, we pick trash up, and it was a whole conversation with the director, like, how did we go from the bulk to the little trashcans? And if you go out there, you can see them lining up on the street. But our people are going through on the, the ones who don't put them on the side, because people say somebody taking their trashcan, we go in and get those. That's a lot. That is a lot.
And just, just one more question, because you brought this, I just thought about this, as far as PRHA. And you, this might be something you have to talk to Mr. Blaine about out Hamilton Place. They have pretty much two trashcans all the way in the back, one on the left and one on the right. And that puts a situation for an elderly person that may have to walk all the way to the back of the neighborhood to, to dump their trash. Is it any way we can talk to them about maybe adding some more, or making it more convenient for the, the residents there?
Is what they're willing to pay, or if we want to look at it as forgiveness or some, we'll, we'll look into it and do a little research and see what's going on. And I don't, and I don't mean to keep talking trash, but the other part, we have residents who sign up, the ones who can't get to the street. Did you all know we have a program where we go into their yard and get their trashcan for them? Right. So we have over a thousand residents on that list, but we have, we are in the process of updating the list, because it was pre-COVID. And we just want to make sure that we reach out to the citizens, because what we're finding is, some citizens no longer live there, but we're still offering the service. So we're updating that information to see more or less, if some are coming off and some will be added. But that is a service we actually offer to our seniors as well.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, and then Dr. Whitaker.
Thank you. Love the presentation, I like talking trash too. In favor of the consensus and the potential signage, I like, A, I know we'll probably look at that at some other point in time. I think it stands out better with the camera, possibly adding a highlight to the city code section under sixteen-point-five, sixteen-dash-five. But one of the concerns was also the seniors who may not be tech savvy, who can't go online, will it still be an option for them to call somebody and say, hey, I got some bulk that I need you to pick up?
Absolutely. We'll take online and we'll take calls. Online is just convenient for those who are tech savvy. But we will always be in communication through, that's just another method of communicating with us, and we'll be able to do that.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I just add to her point real quick?
Absolutely, sir.
To, to that point, can you also add that to, like, the water bills and stuff like that too, for the, for people, so people can be aware of that, that boat service program?
Oh, yeah, 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 absolutely. And, and again, we're not going to just roll this out next week. We want to communicate, even if I have to mention it every council meeting, because we want to make sure people are aware. And we'll announce it every opportunity we have, and we'll look at all of the different marketing tools that we have to be able to put that information out. And I guess.
Excuse me, Ms. Terry, Dr. Whitaker has, and then I'll call for the consensus.
Okay.
I just wanted to give Dr. Whitaker his.
Yeah, Ms. Terry, thank you for the thorough presentation. I, I just wanted to probably conclude with a point, as far as, you were talking about how this is happening, this trash that we're seeing. I think we got to always look at it from a historical perspective. This, this isn't anything new. It has been the history of Portsmouth, where certain neighborhoods have been neglected. It's been along race, it's been along socioeconomic status. And I would dare say that you'll probably see in any city that you have trash buildup along those lines. And I think that as you look to solutions, that we have to always take it into account that these things didn't just pop up in 2023, that they have a history of neglect, and, and we have to make sure that we don't perpetuate those things, and also continue to take into account the root cause of why you see these things occurring. So I just want to say that, because I don't want us to have this impression that this is something new. But we know that our communities along race and socioeconomics have been dumping grounds. And because of that, it has given this allowance for persons to feel comfortable to continue those practices. And so I appreciate you addressing these issues from these points, and trying to make sure that no community is neglected.
That's it.
If you could, please move on to the next part of the presentation.
All right, so the next one is cemeteries. I just wanted to give, Mr. James Wright is going to give that, but I just want to say this, and then I'll say it at seven o'clock as well. Area mosquito spray over Langley Air Force Base, Crane Island, and Churchland section of Portsmouth overnight will happen on Wednesday, July 26. In the event of weather or mechanical delays, the mission will take place on Thursday, July 27, 2023. So basically, they're going to be spraying in Churchland tomorrow evening, Wednesday, July 2026. If it rains, or there are any delays in that mission, it will occur on Thursday, July 27, 2023.
Call for the consensus for the.
Change in the alley.
Yes, that regards to the alleyway. So if I could, at this time, call for consensus, who has your hands for the change?
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the City Council. I'm going to give you an update of some of the ongoing and proposed activities at the Mount Calvary Cemetery Complex and Lincoln Memorial Cemetery. So just to get a general overview of Mount Calvary Cemetery Complex, it's, actually consists of four cemeteries, you see those cemeteries listed there. It's in the northwest corner of Prentice Park neighborhood, approximately fourteen acres, and it is acknowledged with a Department of Historic Resources marker at the front of the, the gate, and have some significant community leader, leaders that are buried at the cemetery. This is an overall map showing some of the boundaries of the cemetery. And here is some of the activities that have taken place with the site assessment, the things that have been completed near the top. And then we have some information at the bottom, things we're still working on, specifically confirmation of the wetland areas with the Corps of Engineers, and creating a geo database for all the cemetery plots. We've done topographic survey, boundary, GPR to locate the graves, and determination, preliminary determination of wetland boundaries. Another picture here of the survey, a snapshot of the results of GPR, showing the location of the graves throughout the cemetery complex. And then this is a tally of the graves. Two thousand two hundred ninety-seven unmarked graves, one thousand five hundred thirty-five concrete slab graves, thirteen stacked graves, two hundred sixty standalone graves, for a total of four thousand one hundred and five graves total, or grave sites. Significant of those results, it gives us the exact location of the cemetery plots, helps us to verify the drainage patterns, helps us identify some potential locations for future stormwater management facilities, based on the location of the grave sites and the conditions in the survey, helps us determine what type of equipment we can use in those confined spaces. And then determination of how those site condition will impact future improvements to the cemetery site. Some of the ongoing site activities, increased maintenance through parks and recreation. There's some additional survey we're going to require on the adjacent parcel, just to verify the extent of some of the grave sites we found, determine the scope of remediation for some of those plots, and pursuit of alternate funding sources. and pursuit of alternate funding sources. Um, summary of grant opportunities. Currently, we have an initial grant from, uh, Virginia Historical African American Cemetery Fund for those eligible grave sites. And then we're starting discussions about future funding for larger scale maintenance activities for the ongoing, um, enhanced maintenance by Parks and Recreation. Um, the, the larger grants you see at the bottom is the Reconnecting Communities Grant. Um, why this qualifies, um, is that one portion of the grant that allows us to address the environmental impacts from transportation and undeserved communities. We know that, uh, cemetery sites impacted both by CSX and 264, uh, basically creating a barrier and a border for drainage. And so that's why that was eligible. Um, the grants, our initial grant submission last year was for half a million dollars. Uh, we had a debrief. Uh, those are the two areas of the grant that, um, needed some additional strengthening as part of our application. We plan to resubmit the grant this year. Uh, the deadline is September, um, 28th. Lincoln Memorial Cemetery on D Creek Boulevard, approximately 20.3 acres. Um, just recently acquired by the city. You see here a GPR, um, showing all the cemetery plots, um, throughout that site. This shows the completed and, um, ongoing task, um, throughout the site from the site assessment. So we've done a topographic survey, verified the boundary and done the GPR and started GPS location of the cemetery plots. Uh, we need to verify those, uh, verify, verify the GPS results, uh, confirm the wetlands with the Corps and create the geo database. Um, here's the, here's the totals, 422 unmarked graves, 4,074 standalone headstones, 4,608 concrete slabs, two stacked graves for a total of 9,079 total graves. Um, next steps, um, for the Reconnecting Communities Grant will need a resolution from council to help bolster our, um, upcoming application. We need to verify the wetlands in the Calvary Cemetery Complex with the Corps of Engineers, complete the site assessment at Lincoln. Um, Park, Parks and Recreation is preparing bid documents for enhanced maintenance activities at Lincoln Cemetery. And we continue our work with, uh, Virginia Department of Historic Resources for those enhanced maintenance activities at both cemeteries. I'll take any questions.
Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. So once the initial work is done, um, as far as identifying graves and the drainage, are there plans to, um, put out an RFP, um, for, um, the upgrade of the cemetery and the, and the tombstones? Or is that something the city is just gonna do? Um, because I, I was interested in knowing whether there's any type of, uh, site drawing to show, uh, how the enhanced, uh, cemeteries will look, other than just, um, maintenance and cutting the grass?
No, not, not at this point right now with the initial funding for the cemetery plots. We plan to work with, um, the African American Historical Society, determine the best route, how to move forward with the restoration of some of those plots. Um, with, uh, with the grant, it's a, so what we're applying for is a planning grant that'll allow us to do the drainage study and to do the design. Um, after that, we'll be allowed to go back through that grant to apply for the funding for the actual construction project. Once we, our intent is to have a successful grant application. Once you get the planning funds, it's pretty much a shoo-in to get the construction funds. Once those dollars are in place, to go ahead and, and solicit for a firm or company or what have you to come in and actually do the work associated with it. Um, what we see in our initial investigation is that there are a number, there's a large drainage area with a large portion of that actually going through the cemetery that's, that's cut off from its, where it wants to go or where it was going in the past before, uh, before the railroad, um, before I-264. And it's, it's not something where we can, um, come in at a, at a short term and try to fix. It, it'll need to take a broader look, the larger look at the entire neighborhood. And actually, the grant application is called I-264, uh, Prentice Park. That's, that's essential because it impacts the whole neighborhood. And so that's how we're addressing it to, to pursue the grant, with the primary impact being how to get water out of that area from the cemetery and to where it needs to go. We may have to redirect around the cemetery a portion of it. A portion of we have to do some other things. So we're still in that early, early, um, drainage study to try to ensure that we're not impacting anyone adversely and that we make the best solution to get the water out of the cemetery. So once the water's out of the cemetery, then we can do some of those other things. But because it stays so wet, because of the, the drainage isn't going anywhere, we need to really get the water out of there first.
Right. So when you say construction, the construction fund, wh- what construction are you speaking of?
Well, well, we don't know yet. So the construction's gonna be whatever we need to do, whether it's put a new pipe system in to redirect water around or whether we need to put a stormwater pump station in or whatever it need, whatever the study comes out, what is the best solution? And, and part of the, part of the planning grant is a, is a public participation component. And so to look at those, those best options of how to move water away from the cemetery to one, to dry it out so that we can get in there and do the work that needs to be done.
So what do you see as the end game?
What I see as the end game?
Right.
Um, I see a successful grant.
No, I mean, I mean as far as the cemetery is concerned. Because, um, what I see is, uh, a cemetery that was neglected purposefully, intentionally, um, because of Jim Crow. And so when I say what do you see as the end game? Um, when I look at Grove Park Cemetery, uh, predominantly, if not all white, that the city took care of with tax dollars. And I look at that cemetery and then I look at Mount Calvary and Lincoln, I shouldn't be able to distinguish them. And so that's, that's what I'm saying. What's, what's the end game? I, I understand, but, but if you're not, um, presenting to us how this is going to potentially look in the final analysis? Cause a lot of this, we've already heard before as far as the topographical studies, all of that. I'm like, where, where, so where are we gonna end up with all of this? Are we gonna end up with a, uh, uh, the African American cemetery is looking just like the, uh, white cemeteries or, or what? Or are we just spinning wheels?
I, I don't spend too much time in cemeteries. What I can tell you is where we're going is we're gonna get a dry, two dry cemeteries with, that, that they don't flood.
So if you, so let me ask you this, let me ask you this. So if, if you don't, if you're not the one spending time with them, then, then who will be? Is that where the RFP process will come into play?
I'm not sure I understand the question. What my...
I'm saying if you're not the one, you say you don't spend a lot of time with cemeteries. I'm asking for what the final product is going to be. And is that something that will have to come from an RFP? Or are you just dealing with the initial drainage issues?
Well, what I'm dealing with is I'm dealing with the drainage and the road network that, that's interior to, to both of the cemeteries. And to, to get those things up to...
Yeah.
Where you can actually get in there and do the things you need to do.
Okay. I'm fine, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. So, um, to us, you know, city attorney, uh, city manager, so where are we heading with this?
Great question. So the, the first thing that we were working on, and I'm gonna make it very simple because I, I know what we want, so I want us to get there. So the first thing we were working on is to actually get the cemetery. So that was the Lincoln. Calvary, we, we got it.
Right.
Uh, Lincoln, we have it.
Right.
I want our cemetery to look like the one on, is it Effingham?
Grove Park.
With the back black gate?
Grove, I think that's Grove Park.
Grove.
Yeah, that's Grove Park.
Yeah. It looks beautiful. Um, there's paved walkway, you know where the cars. Lincoln Cemetery has just been neglected for so many years. It's, and because of the condition it is, I don't wanna give the false hope that it's gonna look like that. But I understand that we want our cemetery to look just as nice and a reflection of who Portsmouth is. So is it gonna happen overnight? No, but I have heard this council very loud and clear of the expectation to have that cemetery bought up to date and to have that cemetery have the same, um...
Aesthetics. So, so my question becomes, is it, will that be done through an RFP process?
Yeah. It, and it's a monetary. So it's a matter of us preparing for it. So for us, we're gonna have to come back and really make sure we have the funding. So what we're doing now is determining the, what it's gonna cost to even bring it into compliance to stop the draining. That's gonna be a couple million dollars, maybe just not two or three. But we're gonna, we need to know what that amount is so that we can move forward. We understand how we want to look and I wanna make sure that we get there. Okay? Council is very, has been very clear. But we had to get the cemetery first. And now it's time to start figuring out what's really wrong with it and, um, addressing those issues so that we can bring it up to who Portsmouth is as far as taking care of our loved ones and the deceased. Is that fair?
Yes. Uh, I just, like I said, we've been talking about this and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm interested in...
The end result. Mm-hmm. Um, so the assessment, uh, I will say, I think that the young man who turned it over, we just agreed, was that two weeks ago or a week ago? At least less than a month that he turned over the property. But we're gonna get to the end product because I know we wanna get there. But we need to do it along the way together. Cause I think you all knowing what challenges we're gonna face is gonna help us all stay on the same page and understanding how we get there together.
Thank you.
Right. And if I could to, um, before I call on Mr. Tillage, no, go ahead, Mr. Tillage. I'm sorry. Go ahead. You have the floor, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so, so my comments, uh, Dr. Whitaker, uh, pretty much, um, took out my mouth. Um, I think it's very, um, imperative when we have anything that's city-owned that all of them look uniform. And so my question was just kind of based on the aesthetics of what all of our s- city-owned cemeteries would look like. And so I appreciate the, the presentation, um, that you gave with this preliminary information. Um, I think it's very crucial that when we talk about projects, number one, uh, as city manager knows, I'm really a stickler when it comes to timelines, um, that we're... So do we have like a estimated time for when the study will be completed?
So, um, it's a confines of the grant. The study is to take anywhere from six to 12 months because that lines you up for the next application cycle. So the grant application goes in September. Uh, once again, we need a resolution from city council, so we'll be back before you with a resolution for that, for that grant. Um, there are some separate funds we can use to get started and we can get reimbursed through the grant should we get it. So whether we, whether or not we get the grant won't stop us from starting the study. It may impact how fast we go through it because it, they are federal funds. And so, um, the, the grant, getting the grant agreement in place should we get the funds, um, takes a few months. Um, you get through that, then you're in line for the next, for the next part. And so to your question, Dr. Whitaker, about the RFP, it's a series of RFPs, it's not just one. And so because there are different types of work, so the, the drainage component will be separate from the roadway component, which will be separate. So there are different components. Each one will have its own RFP.
Thank you.
Councilman, uh, you know, Councilman...
Just one more question.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Um, and I guess in another presentation, um, city manager, if we could get a, um, a more comprehensive, um, report on, uh, city-owned cemeteries as far as, um, what it would cost? You may have mentioned not having the cost right now. Uh, but, uh, once we get the monetary cost of what, what those figures look like, plus what it will look like to make all of these cemeteries look uniform. Um, so that if that is the desire of council at that time, we'll at least, you know, have an idea of what that cost would be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hugo, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the brief, Mr. Wright. Uh, your brief says that we, we know that there are veterans in these cemeteries. Do we know the locations of the vets' graves?
Um, I'd have to look to see, um, back through the, through the catalog to see what the, what the names are. So where there are names, we do know those, those locations are. Where there are unnamed, we, we'd have to go through a process to search to figure out who's interned there.
Okay. Well, so, so I would ask that we do that because, um, around Memorial Day, we have, uh, organizations to put flags on veterans' graves. Christmas time, we have wreaths across America that decorate graves with wreaths for our vets. Uh, I would hope that, that as we engage those organizations, that we include the veterans' graves in these cemeteries for those kind of activities to, uh, to, to make sure that we're, we're treating all veterans equally in, uh, in, in recognizing their service.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. One of the things I want to encourage you, um, Mr. Wright and your department. I've participated in the cleaning up of Mount Calvary Cemetery for a number of years with a number of organizations. And to your point, I'm not an engineer, but I know that when we've walked the property to clean it up and, and do the work out there, it's very wet, particularly in Mount Calvary. I mean, you have to have boots, you know, on because it, it's so wet that you actually begin to sink into, to the soil. So understanding what you're saying from that perspective, having done it, um, I can appreciate that it is a process and there's a lot of planning that goes into it. And I encourage you and I, I'm glad that we're taking the approach systematically to get the drainage right. Because to me, that's the main part of getting the cemetery right, getting the drainage right. So thank you, uh, on behalf of council, for all the work that you and your staff are doing. And we know that, you know, we'll get it done in, in the proper order.
Thank you.
Madam Manager, are you, uh, ready to move on to the review? And then we'll review of the agenda of your items.
Oh, yeah.
Report overview.
Good evening. Um, item 23 dash 250, adoption of an ordinance accepting $59,628 from Community Development Block Grant. And that concludes my portion.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any council liaison reports at this time? Sir, you have the floor.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I wanna, uh, make mention to, to everyone watching. Uh, our Portsmouth Public School Leadership Team is advertising on their human resources page, sign-on bonuses for new teacher hires, $5,000 sign-on bonuses for new teachers, $4,000 sign-on bonuses for military vets, $3,000 sign-on bonuses for school social workers, $3,000 for school psychologists, $3,000 for school counselors. So, uh, I commend, uh, Dr. Bracy and, and the, the school system leadership uh, for, for proactively working to, to, uh, get, get, uh, our teacher shortage addressed uh, through these sign-on bonuses. And I wanna encourage, uh, everyone, if you know a teacher who is looking to go to work, uh, here's an opportunity to, to work in, in our schools with our kids uh, and, uh, and be compensated on the front end for, for those efforts. So, so, uh, thanks to, to the school leadership for setting this in motion. That's it, sir. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other council liaison reports? Seeing none, that concludes our public work session. We're gonna take a five-minute break and we will reconvene at, let's just make it 7:15. We'll reconvene our regular council meeting at 7:15. Thank you.